I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for December 11th, 2017, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we discussed the HEA Union. Two issues, one's on ongoing negotiations and the other one is a job reclassification for the local building inspector. That we did take a vote on and we will announce later in the agenda. With that, I'm informing you that we will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting.
Okay.
In addition, anyone in the audience wishing to video or audio tape must notify the chairman now. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcement. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Donna Richardson, Harwich resident and current vice chairperson of the Montamois School District. I watched last week's selectman meeting when concerns were discussed about the Harwich Community Center and the Harwich Cultural Center. I remember a comment being made about the Harwich Community Center being a terrific facility, but the model of optimal efficiency may be lacking. Since hearing that and thinking about my own personal experiences at the Harwich Community Center, I was wondering how one might obtain more information regarding how it serves the needs of the total community, seniors, youth, and anyone else in between. One thought I had was to maybe form an ad hoc committee to look into what's working well at the center and maybe address any improvements that might need to be made. From this residence point of view, an assessment of needs and offering should occur. Status quo only works so long.
Thank you, Donna. I did get an email from you as well, which I will respond to. Public comment and announcement, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. I mentioned, I think, last week that we're working on a watershed permit pilot project with our neighboring towns that are on Pleasant Bay. And I'd asked Carol Ridley, who's the administrator for the Pleasant Bay Alliance, to put together a brief update of the status of that. And I'm not going to read the update, but would like to inform you that that update is in the packet for you to read. In this follow-through, I want to be sure that this process is completely transparent. We'd signed a resolution in June, the four boards, to move ahead with a pilot program with DEP and EPA. It's moving along very well. And our plan is to keep this open and in January, we hope to be ready to come back as an agenda item, Mr. Chairman, to discuss this in more detail. But if you would take a chance to look at the packet and read this update, I think you'll find it interesting.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Okay, we're going to do the consent agenda and we're going to pull B, E, and F out and take those separately. So we're going to read A, C, D, G, H, and I.
Mr. Chairman, I move the following consent items. Consent agenda items, A is approve the minutes of November 13, 2017, a regular meeting. November 20, 2017, regular meeting. November 30, 2017, regular meeting. B will come back to. C, approve the 2018 annual liquor license renewals. D is approve the 2018 annual general license renewals. We'll come back to E and F. G, approve application for road race by Cape Cod Athletic Club for January 14, 2018. H, accept the resignation of John Burke from the Zoning Board of Appeals. I appoint Al Donahue as full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals from an alternate position.
I'll second it, but you did mean the point Al Donahue, who was determined to expire June 30, 2018, right?
I certainly meant that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we read B.
B is award the, award and sign the bond anticipation notes.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Discussion. I pulled this out just so that we could ask the treasurer or the finance director any questions we have. Larry, I know you shared one concern that I had.
Well, I think, my concern was, is that it's in here and I realize the standard, but I think in all these it'd be good to have at least an executive summary of what it is we're signing. And so, I don't think it's too late to maybe just give, because this is, these bands are a little bit, that acronym, not everyone knows what's going on, and maybe mention, just bring people up to speed.
Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence. So, basically what we have is, obviously, the town has approved several projects at the ballot. And these are large projects that we know we have to finance for the long term, so those are bonds. When we don't know exactly how much we need, we do bond anticipation notes, otherwise known as bands, bond anticipation notes. And that could be for six months or a year. I think these ones happen to be for six months. What it does, it gives us the cash on hand to be able to cover the obligations that we see for the next six months. A great example of it, one of the ones of which is in the package, is we have the waterside project at Sacquet Tucket. So we know between now and June 30, we will need $6 million. We have $1 million coming from the grant, so it's actually a $7 million contract. So this bond anticipation note gives us that $6 million to be able to pay our obligation. If the total project were to come in slightly less, we don't want to bond something that we don't need. So we wait till the projects are done and then you go from a band to a bond and then you bond for the long term. In this case, I think we had that for 20 years is what the estimate was. So these band documents are basically those elements of projects that we are currently engaged in that we need money for. In terms of specifically what the town is being asked or what the board is being asked tonight, is our financial advisor goes and they post the amount of money we need, we get a bond rating or a band rating, if you would, for our risk level. So we're a very low risk, which in the world of finance is a good thing. So they came in, I think, at 1.3% finance and we had five companies put in for it. And this is a competitive process, so they do it, it's all, I think it's all electronic. They get the bids in and the bids come in. It is a little confusing because they give us one bid amount and then they give us a premium, so they give us a discount, so you have to look at what the net number really is. So we get to 1.3. And in this case, we had five and the recommendation before you this evening is, I don't remember the name of the company, but the-
Jeffries.
Jeffries, thank you. Is the Jeffries people were the ones that were the low bid. So really, this is borrowing money for a six-month period of time.
And so even though the bond, the note is 2%, the net's 1.3%, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
They have to-
So it is a little, because they do premium and they have other things where they, a premium is, they pay us for the privilege of borrowing the money. So it's an incentive for people and they don't do it just with us. I mean, that's common industry practice at this point.
Okay, thank you.
And then there was some related material to this, Chris, that we're going to add to the website?
Yeah, we will put in, one of the things is, sometimes, obviously, this one is $10 million. So the marketplace wants to have a band survey done, similar to a bond where they come in and they give you a rating. So we're AA+. So they wanted to come in and see if we were going to be upgraded or if we're going to stay stable or were we going to go down. The good news, and I do have this later on the agenda, what their findings were, but we prepared two things. We prepared what's called an official statement, which is anywhere from 50 to 75 pages of the town's finances. So we will put that on the website, that's done. And then they actually give us a formal rating. So for the short term, we got the highest rating you could get, I think it's SP+. So we had the highest rating for the short term. We didn't ask them for a long-term analysis because we haven't gone out formally to bond, but they did indicate that they would keep us at the AA+. So we're at the next highest level to that is a AAA. So we're just one tier below that.
And lastly, are these new companies or is this normally who we use? Is this, or is it spread out? Do we usually use Jeffries?
That's a good question.
Then I know of they've never won a bid before.
Okay. And I guess that question stems from Jeffries and Eastern with the same coupon rate, premium. Eastern was $747 cheaper. And then in the net interest, Jeffries was $747 more. So the two of them were exactly the same, I think. Is there a reason we pick one over the other or is it?
I think we get that as a recommendation from the financial advisor that goes through and he actually does. In this case, it used to be First Southwest, now it's called Hilltop Securities. So we base it upon their recommendation.
Okay. So the motion that we're voting is the motion that's in the packet, which is, there's five parts to that. So if you can reference that in the, actually, the motion's been made, so I want to reference, the motion is the motion that's in the packet that's dated December 11, 2017, titled Vote of the Board of Selectmen. Any other discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We do have those documents for the board to sign.
Okay.
Let's move then to, she never trusts us to sign these documents. Let's move to E then. I move we approve award of contract for pets, the pet burial ground walkway projects for Cape Cod builders for Phase 1 in the amount of $23,236 and Phase 2 in the amount of $22,800.
Two.
Well, as I already stated this, for the pet burial ground walkway.
To Cape Cod builders.
The Cape Cod builders. That's why I read it first.
Okay, second. Okay, moved in seconded to approve the award of the contract for pet burial ground walkway. I guess I had questions on this. This is the second time this has been out to bid. I believe the first time it was bidding all three phases.
That's correct. We actually received the bids, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, and they came in above the amount, this is being funded out of cemetery revenues. So we had a certain amount, I think we had in the neighborhood of $50,000. When we did the first bid, it came in closer to $60,000, so we could not do the award. So we broke it up into a base bid plus add alternates. And based upon the amount of available money, we just did the, we only did add alternate one, the phase two. Normally, if it's under $50,000, it would be the administrator could sign it. In this case, the overall project is going to be $60,000, so I wanted to make sure that the board was aware that that, once we get additional revenue from sale of lots and such, we will be back to do the phase three. So we just don't have sufficient funds to do it at this point.
Okay. And Chris, you and I are going to continue to disagree on contracts. In my reading of this, this is a 30B contract again, which is a goods and services contract and it should be a 3039M, which is a public works contract, prevailing wage, payment bond, OSHA certification. So I think we should probably, at this point, go to legal with our contracts and find out best practices and maybe get an opinion from Copeland Page on what we're using, when and why.
KP Law.
KP Law. Sorry.
Get it right.
So, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to sign the contract, but there's a motion to approve. Any other discussion?
Just remind me, this was a town meeting appropriation, what's the source of funding for this?
Cemetery funds, Chris just-
Cemetery funds, but Robin's here.
But we're not collecting funds for Yes, Right, because it hasn't built yet, right?
Correct.
What's the time like?
So I have a revolving account and in my revolving account, I'm allowed to spend $75,000 a year. So at this point, I've already spent close to 10. So we do have more expenditures, that's why we cannot fund this all at once. We only have left in our account at the current, as of today, $59,000 in that account. That account is from, generated from my ground penetrating radar, lot sales, monument mark outs, burial fees, so that goes into one account.
So that revolving fund is, that's okay to use for all these expenditures, as you enroll?
Yes.
Cemetery-related?
Yep, all cemetery expenses.
Janell?
So, thanks for doing that research on the contracts. I don't pretend to know anything about that, but because we're still really only approving less than $50,000 for this, what is it, 44, 46?
It's 46, 036.
I am going to sign it because it's under 50 and you'll be back for Phase 3 anyway.
Yes.
But I do appreciate that research you did, Michael, and I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving next then to agenda item F, which is approve the recommendation of the harbor master to avoid, award the 2018 and 2020 mooring service agent contracts.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve recommendation of the harbor to award 2018 to 2020 mooring service agent contracts. John, I had a couple of questions for you. Mooring service agents, thank you, John. Is this, it was kind of brought to my attention today that we're voting on three years, but in fact, we're only voting on one because they come back?
Yeah, my recommendation, I think, said three years because it's really a three-year period. They're awarded the one-year contract and then they come back to me with a memo every year to recommend that they get a second year up to three years. So I may have worded my memo improperly, but that's the intent is, it's a, we award the contract for the year with the option of two additional years before they have to renew the contract.
So in year 19 and year 20, in this case, they, it won't go back out to bid?
Correct.
Okay. Is this time-sensitive, John?
No, not really. I mean, we have some time.
Because I know that there was some other people interested and one piece of feedback I got from one was, when I asked why they didn't submit a bid, was that they didn't think that the two-week time allotment to fill out all the paperwork was enough time, given Thanksgiving week was one of the weeks. And it would happen to be somebody that has another business and they're busy bringing gear home. That's just one reason and I certainly would appreciate you saying no, I don't think that that's a good enough reason. But as I read through the more, as I read through the contract options, I didn't think that the one contract or the one bidder had supplied insurance, employees, there was a lot of questions in that that weren't answered.
Which particular one, I guess?
So that was AGL.
Okay, I know they-
For the three harbors.
Okay.
So, and I'm sure you reviewed it, John, and if you're comfortable, because they are a past mooring service agent, that you have all that material, but I don't think that the average person, knowing that they can, they're going to bid on this, knows that they could skip lines and not have a business plan and not have, they didn't, he didn't include insurance information, liability insurance information, employees in the office to do the sticker ring.
I know he does have insurance, I think it's been sent. Yes, he has been a mooring servicing agent in Harwich for many years. He has the same fields that he bid on last year. I'm comfortable with the job he's done. As far as the other individual, boy, I wish he would have called me because we could have, I could have worked with him and I could have made arrangements before we got to this point, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I'm pretty flexible, it's not that time-sensitive. I'm not sure it's fair, though, to the other members who have already, you know, met the timeline and gone through the process to now hold it back and rebid it all again. That would be my only concern and I guess I'd like to-
I think lastly, John, these mooring fields, I know that they pay an inspection fee, but is there an option for the people that own the moorings to do the work themselves or get their own chain, their own ropes, their own shackles and do their own work?
Yes, sir. They can do their own work and the only thing is they can't inspect their own moorings. So if they don't want to use their mooring servicing agent, they can bring it to my office and I'll inspect it, or my staff will inspect it.
Okay.
And that option is always there.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, John.
Sir, thanks.
Okay, that concludes the consent agenda. Public hearings and presentations, backup bylaw for time, place, and manner for marijuana retail sales. And we have Attorney John Giorgio with us tonight. Oh, Craig?
He's had his hand up.
Yep, you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
My name's John Chori, President of Harwich. You asked for, I just want to back up one article.
Sure.
Not clear. Do you ask for public input on this pet cemetery walkway?
We did at the time of, that this was approved, yes.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear that.
Town, town-
I didn't ask, I didn't hear any public input.
Chris?
I believe that, and Robin's still here, but when the presentation was done at town meeting, there was an indication as to what it was going to look like in the layout. And I believe it had the plan that showed the walkway around. So we're just implementing what we had informed town meeting we were doing.
I thought town meeting was just approving the physical clearing of the lots, not any other grandiose plan for that place. That's my impression of that.
I'm not going to characterize it as grandiose, Mr. Chairman, but certainly, if town meeting approves funding for a cemetery revolving account that's allowed to be used for development in the cemeteries, the cemetery commissioners and the department head are certainly within their rights to develop what we showed people that we were going to develop. I think perhaps if your point is going, the crematorium is a issue that's going to be related to that and that is going to be a separate and distinct article, that will be before town meeting in coming May.
No, it isn't. I'd like to speak to the boardwalk, you know. I see a clear distinction between pets and people as far as cemetery goes, in my mind.
So Chris, the-
And I would like to put an input into this boardwalk.
Chris, the pet burial ground was approved by town meeting, correct?
The acquisition of that property for the development of that site for that purpose was, yes.
And the, and the funds, Robin's funds, to spend up to $75,000 out of a revolving fund?
Not Robin's funds, the taxpayers' funds.
Cemeteries, right.
But for the cemetery and through the cemetery commission. So I think this venue is probably better for you to bring it up to the cemetery commission and have a discussion with them because they would be the ones that would direct these initiatives.
I didn't hear at town meeting that they were going to put a boardwalk in there for $75,000. I may have been wrong, but I didn't hear that. I just heard acquisition, the clearing of the land. That's all I heard at town meeting.
Robin, go ahead.
There was a packet that was made for town meeting and it actually clearly showed the pathways that went around. And we had used a model of a pet cemetery that was in Florida. I had called them and asked them if we could use that as a, kind of like a guide for us for the meeting and it was in a PowerPoint slide. And we actually presented that and it was shown on the wall at the meeting.
Go ahead, follow up, John.
I just, you know, $50,000 for a pathway, when we had a boardwalk proposed for Sacquet Tucket for a pathway, that was removed because of cost restraints. And I think, I believe stone dust was going to go down there. Why wouldn't stone dust be adequate for a pet cemetery? And a pet cemetery, which is probably going to be visited by tens of people versus a harbor that's going to be viewed and visited by thousands of people, you're putting a $50,000 pathway in a pet cemetery viewed by 10, 20, 30 people, thousands of people, you're putting stone dust down. Another thing, I'd like to know how many pet plots have been sold to this date and at what cost those pet plots were sold at and how long before that revolving fund gets back that $50,000.
So now I'm going to cut you off. People love their pets, so we won't guess how many people go. The boardwalks were removed from the harbor because it went over the $3 million budget. I would, I would suggest you write me, the chairman, a letter expressing your concerns and to the town administrator and we will get you your answers.
And to the cemetery commission?
And to the cemetery commission.
That's where this lies.
Okay, John Giorgio, marijuana.
From pets to marijuana, what did I say tonight?
So, I'm bringing this back, John, after the wake of what happened in Brewster where the moratorium, as well as the bylaw failed.
Yes.
And they had no time, place, and manner bylaw. So now it's pretty much open for the whole town.
Okay.
So I'm bringing this back for discussion on a backup bylaw for time, place, and manner.
Okay. So if I could just set the table, if you will, Mr. Chairman, the town planner had, after I met with the board the last time, the town planner had asked our assistance in drafting basically two bylaws. One was a, to extend the moratorium, which is a zoning bylaw. Right now, that moratorium expires on June 30th and the proposal that has been, come to you from the planning board now, is to amend that moratorium by extending the moratorium to December 31, 2018. And I believe the intent there is to make sure that the town has sufficient time to essentially get this right. You know, one of the problems that everyone is, the difficulties everyone is operating under is we don't really know what rules are going to apply. And I don't know if you read the paper just today, but the Cannabis Control Commission has had several meetings recently and they're, they're trying to get their draft regulations out by the end of the year because they have to be in place by March 1st. So, so that's one bylaw that has been presented to you by the planning board. And we have, we made a few suggestions, but essentially what's in your packet is good to go, should you want to proceed with that. The second bylaw that we were requested to assist in drafting was a total ban on marijuana establishments. And I did want to make that clear, that both under the moratorium bylaw and the ban, I believe it was the intent of the selectmen to do a complete ban, not just retail sales. And so that's the way the bylaw is, the draft bylaw is currently drafted. As you know, Harwich was a no vote in November of 2016, so under the new law, you, you can ban the sale of marijuana establishments through a zoning bylaw. And let me just say that the law does not say it has to be a zoning bylaw, but the Attorney General has said, because this is the regulation of land, it requires a zoning bylaw. We've actually recommended to our clients that in addition to a zoning bylaw, you consider adopting a general bylaw as well, sort of belt and suspenders. And I would note that in October, the town of Dennis did exactly that. So it was the same night as the Brewster town meeting, their town meeting passed both the general and the zoning bylaw in Brewster, they failed. So we had prepared the form of a general bylaw and we provided that to the town planner and the town administrator. And we certainly would recommend that you consider putting that on the warrant as well. So then the issue becomes, do you also want to do a time, place, and manner restriction? And what that is, is it would be a zoning bylaw that regulates where marijuana establishments can be located in the town, because if you don't have specific requirements, it will be allowed anywhere where retail sales are located. That may be fine for you, it may not, but typically, when you do a time, place, and manner zoning bylaw, you want to establish it as a special permit use so that the, whoever the special permit granting authority is, the planning board or the zoning board of appeals, would have the ability to condition the operation and to regulate it in some manner. And so that, that certainly is an option for you. And of course, the issue that you have is, I guess if I would put these in hierarchy, if you pass an absolute ban in sufficient time, then you really don't have to do anything else and you could, if you had a town meeting with all three, actually four articles on the warrant, if the absolute ban passes both the zoning and the general, then you're done. You can pass over the moratorium extension, you could pass over the time, place, and manner restriction. But as in Brewster, where they defeated, they defeated the, both the moratorium and the outright ban, you may want to consider having a backup bylaw, if you will, with that time, place, and manner restriction in place. That's really an issue for the town, the town to decide. I was, anecdotally, I was at a town meeting in October where there was an outright ban, a time, place, and manner restriction, and a moratorium. The outright, the outright ban passed, so we were done and I got to go home early, basically, for town meeting. But, you know, you don't know what your electorate wants here. You maybe have some idea, but, you know, it's, it's not really predictable, in my experience. So then the question becomes the timing. When do you do this? And I know the, I think the thought has been that these would all be on the warrant for the May town meeting. I, I had sent a detailed email to the town planner and to the town administrator, just raising a, I guess I would call it a red flag. Because as of April 1st, the commission has to start accepting applications. And we would be concerned, again, we don't know what the, what those regulations are going to say. We may have a better idea by the end of December because we'll at least see the draft regulations. But to be on the safe side, at this point, we're recommending that your marijuana zoning regulation be in place before April 1st. And I realize that would necessitate the calling of a special town meeting. You may not want to do that. I know that's a, I know Harwich doesn't frequently have special town meetings and, but it's something I felt duty bound to at least advise you of, of that option. So that as of April 1st, you're going to know exactly what, what the voters in, in Harwich want. They'll either enact the ban, they'll enact, they'll extend the moratorium, or they'll do a time, place, and manner restriction. Now, you know, there's a, you probably have read that there are an awful lot of cities and towns that are enacting bans. And the town, the city, the town of Milford was a yes vote, but they recently voted at the ballot to ban establishments in their own town. So the issue becomes, how do you best protect the town and give the voters the option to really decide what they want to do here? We have been hearing unofficially some rumblings that the marijuana industry is now becoming increasingly concerned at the number of towns that are banning marijuana or even enacting moratoria. And there's been some threat, if you will, I hesitate to use the word threat, but there's been some discussion that they may challenge one or more moratoriums that are voted. And so you don't know what could ultimately happen there. If a court were to strike down your moratorium and you had not enacted either an outright ban or a time, place, and manner restriction by April 1st, there could be some exposure there. But that's really, that, that's a risk that you all have to decide in terms of whether you think it's worth calling a special town meeting or not. But I would definitely recommend, if you're concerned about the more, about the ban not passing, I would definitely recommend you consider a time, place, and manner zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Tell me when our, remind me when our current moratorium expires?
June 30th, 2018.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, comments from the board? Don?
My favorite question from the last time. What's the threshold to pass a zoning bylaw so that everybody knows it?
It's a two-thirds vote.
So even if the majority voted, but if it was one vote short of two-thirds?
That's why we recommend at least that you consider the general bylaw as well. Don, would that be upheld in court if it was challenged? We can certainly make some good arguments. You avoid grandfathering, grandfathering, it's a simple majority. But the Attorney General has approved general bylaws, but she's also said you have to have a zoning bylaw in place. The moratorium is also a zoning bylaw, so that requires a two-thirds vote as well.
That's why I mentioned it. And I'm also going to mention that we handled a similar situation a little bit more than a decade ago with the adult entertainment. It wasn't so much to approve of it, it was to control it.
Right. That's right. Because there you had First Amendment issues that, that you had to be concerned with because adult entertainment has been, has been ruled to be a form of expression. So you had First Amendment issues. But you're right, a time, place, and manner, at a minimum, you want to have that in place so that it can't proliferate anywhere in town where you can buy cigarettes or, you know, any, any retail sale.
And that's the, the bundle I'm tying up here is that absent an outright ban, coming out of town meeting, the moratorium expires, and then it doesn't go, you know, to the third option. If you didn't consider it at the town meeting, it goes to the Wild West. Everything is possible. I mean, you could put it anywhere. That's a retail zone.
That's correct.
Janelle?
So time, place, and manner still needs a two-thirds also?
Yes. It's a zoning bylaw.
Right. So conceivably, we could get nothing.
I believe I said that. That's always possible. I have, I'm, not that it's, not that I can predict this, but I have not seen that happen yet. I mean, Brewster, Brewster voted down the ban and they voted down the moratorium. I don't think they had a time, place, and manner.
They did not.
Right, because you just said they're free for all.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry?
Help me out again on the deadlines.
Okay.
You've mentioned this, but we have a, you say the Regulatory Group and the Boston is set to set their, to determine their guidelines in March of next year.
Yes, it's the Cannabis Control-
Cannabis Control in March of next year. Now, will they, do they have any influence on the April, the next deadline's the April 1st deadline?
Yes, well, that, so they have-
Is that set in concrete or will they influence?
No, that's in the law.
That's in the law.
They have to start accepting applications on April 1st.
On April 1st.
And they have to have their regulations in place by March 1st.
And then the next deadline, you mentioned that Michael brought up was our current moratorium, which is until June of next year.
That's correct, June 30th, 2018.
Does that help us avoid the special town meeting as April is done? And does that buy us some time so we could have our May town meeting, having that moratorium in place?
We would argue yes. However, I cannot guarantee you that the Cannabis Control Commission or the courts would, would agree with that. So what's going to happen is if you, let's say on April 1st, an application is made to the commission to open a, I'm going to just call it a pot shop here in Harwich. The commission, the first thing they'll do is they'll send you a letter saying, are these, are marijuana establishments permitted in your town under zoning? And you would respond, we have a moratorium in place, and we have, perhaps the planning board has held the hearing, and we have on the warrant for May, an article to amend the zoning bylaw to ban it and/or regulate it. Is that going to be sufficient for the Cannabis Control Commission to deny that application? I don't think so.
Until our May town meeting, basically.
Well, yeah, because it may not, they may not process that until after the May town meeting. But the law says they're governed by what's in place on April 1st. So I do think there's a risk that if you don't adopt your zoning regulation prior to April 1st, that you, there could be a period of exposure there. We're going to know better once the draft regulations are issued, which is by the end of this year. But you should start thinking about the possibility, if you have other business to conduct, of calling a special town meeting, much in the same way that Dennis and Brewster and some other towns did.
Thank you, John.
Just educational wise, the court could challenge a moratorium, but they, they could, we could be challenged in court for a moratorium but not for a ban? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, that's an interesting question, Larry. Definitely moratoria have been challenged in court. And sometimes they've been upheld and other times they've been overturned. There is a real question out there whether the, the recent legislation which passed in June to correct the issues in the law. As you know, the, the general court made a distinction between those towns that voted yes in November and those towns that voted no. And there's a different process for banning marijuana establishments, depending upon how the town voted. There, there could potentially be an equal protection argument there that marijuana establishments are not being treated equally in terms of local regulation. I, I'm not aware that any lawsuit has been filed. I don't know if there will be one, but there is the potential for that law to be challenged. Thank you.
Don?
Just a follow-up, John. When we last met on this subject, there was a discussion about the Attorney General, who has a period of time to review town meeting articles, that verbally agreed to a shortened period. But is there any indication that, that that's set in stone? Or we go to a May town meeting and how, and how long would they typically have under the law to-
So I looked at this issue last year, and you voted your moratorium the first Monday in May? And it was approved by the Attorney General, I want to say July 12th.
That's a blanket moratorium. I'm talking about, let's say we have the ban.
Well, the, the moratorium was a zoning bylaw, so right after town meeting, it was submitted to the Attorney General for approval. And it took between May 2nd and July 12th for that to be approved. We can certainly, we have a very good relationship with the Attorney General, and we could certainly try to get them to rule on it sooner. But here's, and I hate to get too technical because I'm, I don't want to put everybody to sleep in just before the Patriots game. But technically, a zoning bylaw takes effect on the day it's enacted. That's what the law says, but it's subject to approval by the Attorney General. The Attorney General is saying, in this instance, that not only do you have to have your zoning in place, but it has to be approved by the Attorney General and published before it would effectively prohibit or regulate these types of establishments. You know, that's their position. I don't quite understand how they get there, but that's their position. So there's a lot of risk in terms of that, Larry, in terms of that June 30th. But if you get to June 30th and you don't have your substantive bylaw approved and published, then theoretically on, not theoretically, on July 1st, you don't have anything.
That's what I was driving at. If, if the Attorney General took the amount of time that she has under the law to review this.
Right.
There's, there's a seam between when the moratorium evaporates that we're operating under right now and the end of that timeframe where we would be without anything.
Correct. Now, the, the other thing in terms of a moratorium, and I, you know, I hate to put it this way, but you might pass something in May, a substantive ban. So, yeah, and I want to correct this because you might still want to vote the moratorium because you don't know if there's going to be some kind of a procedural glitch in the way the zoning was enacted, or there could be a lawsuit challenging it. So you may want to also do the moratorium just because you have such a tight timeframe so that if the worst happened, you would still have the fall of 2018 to try again or to, to, you know, to modify it. So I would put all three on the warrant and let's see what happens and potentially vote the moratorium in addition to either an outright ban or a time, place, and manner restriction.
Finally, Mr. Chair, in a hierarchy way, looking at this, just so the public understands, we'll have more conversations about this before whatever action we're taking. But they need, the public does need to understand the two-thirds vote issue.
Mm-hmm.
And time, place, and manner would be the same thing.
Yes.
So you get the majority of people voting for an outright ban, but not two-thirds. And subsequently, you get a time, place, and manner bylaw with a majority of people vote for it, but not two-thirds. The net effect is you have nothing.
You have nothing. You have nothing to protect you then.
That's correct.
Chris?
Just for folks at home, just so we could be clear, because I think people hear marijuana and they hear moratoriums and they hear bans and they think that everything is going to be banned. But under the existing law, as we are now, John, the recreational use in your private home-
Oh, yes, yeah.
-is still a given. That's, that's something that the voters passed and, and that is a given, just so people get that.
Absolutely. And the ability to grow up to six plants per person in your household is not affected by any of this. And the other important thing is that this does not affect medical marijuana establishments.
Well, it was, I was going to follow up too, that we did try, I think in the time that I've been here, the board put forth a time, place, and manner for the medical marijuana, and that failed slightly by the two-thirds. So there is no regulation to the time, manner, or place of-
Yep.
-medical marijuana. So really, the question that's before the board is how do we control the recreational, I'm sorry, the retail distribution of it? And the board has already voted to do the outright ban. And now the question is a fallback position to see whether, if the ban doesn't go, would the, would the voters want to have a regulation of time, place, and manner? I just want, because this issue is a complex issue, and I think sometimes we miss some of those other pieces that people need to know what we are doing and what we can't do anymore.
Thank you, Chris.
As, as you, many of you know, I meet with the Policy Committee of the Massachusetts Municipal Association in our discussions of this. With the number of towns that are moving towards bans of the retail sales, the Cannabis Control Commission, in, in part of their licensing, are also developing regulations on home delivery procedures for retail sales units. And it's my understanding that additionally, if, say, Brewster were to approve of a retail facility in Harwich not, the facility from Brewster would be able to do retail home deliveries to their clients in Harwich. Is that, under your understanding, is that true?
Could I, should I answer that question on December 31st? When I see the draft regulations? I, I think that's very plausible. I, but I can't tell you with any high level of certainty what those regulations are going to say, but that sounds plausible to me.
So if that's the case, though, can we include those, that verbiage in any of these bylaws that we come up with for the warrant, home delivery? Or is that a wholesome issue?
I don't believe home delivery is included in the definitions under the state law. But if the commission does approve a home delivery system, they do have broad authority to enact regulations. And so again, Janelle, we're going to have to look at those regulations and then make a educated, you know, decision or, you know, analysis of that.
Thank you. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brovi's not here, but when this matter came before the planning board, we just didn't favor, I posed no. We had the chief come in with Detective Sergeant Brackett and testify, and we took some documentary evidence in, and then we voted the ban. So we just didn't get up one say, favor, I posed no. We, we put some time and effort into it so that it would be reflective of the fact that we just didn't pass it right through.
And what we're talking about now is adding another bylaw, giving it back to you to add another bylaw for time, place, and manner in addition to what you've already done.
We'd be glad to do it.
Thank you.
And that, if I may, that was, that was my question, procedural wise, is that Joe, I think in the memo that the planning board sent to us, there were precise deadlines on that schedule.
Yep.
Now, if we, if it goes back to the planning board, does, does that schedule start over again?
Yes, because it's a new bylaw.
It, well, it'd be a new bylaw.
I mean, all three of them. I know that one bylaw, but would all of them start over?
So the big issue is that the planning board, within 65 days of the formal referral by the selectmen, have to hold a public hearing. And so if you were to refer a time, place, and manner bylaw to the planning board, that would trigger a new deadline.
Just for that bylaw?
Yeah. Although it's, I would assume the planning board may want to hold a public hearing on all of them at the same time.
And hopefully in 65 days, we give enough time to do so.
Yeah. So I would give, if you want to do that, I would do that sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, just the final comment, just so everybody understands. We did indeed vote against it at the ballot, but by nowhere near a two-thirds margin. So it's conceivable that, that this backup bylaw becomes really important at town meeting.
Right. Okay. Chris?
For clarity purposes, if I heard you right, Attorney Giorgio, that if, if we have a special town meeting in March and pass it in March prior to the April 1, the, the zoning, but that it doesn't become effective until after we have the Attorney General sign off on it. If the Attorney General takes three months-
Right.
Then don't we still have the, the window of vulnerability that's out there? I, I guess I'm trying to figure out the-
It, it's much less, Chris, because you will have voted by a two-thirds vote to enact the bylaw. And so when you get that letter from the Cannabis Control Commission, you can say on March, whatever, town meeting adopted a zoning bylaw banning marijuana establishments. Yes, it's subject to ult, as with any bylaw, it's subject to ultimate, I guess, disapproval by the Attorney General. by the Attorney General, but that's a very different situation than if on March, on April 1st, there's an application, and you have nothing. All you maybe have is a planning board hearing, and maybe a recommendation, but you have no town meeting vote.
Gotcha. Anything else from the board?
So I assume, then, we need to put this on the agenda for next meeting, to send it back, because time's current, and it's not on the agenda tonight to do that.
Right. Planning. Anyone else in the public wish to comment? Yes.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm the Assistant Town Administrator, Charlene Greenhenge, and now the interim town planner. As I'm the one who's going to have to be handling the process with this, with the planning board, I just wanted a couple clarifications. One, Attorney Georgia, would it be your recommendation that at the special, we bring all of the marijuana-related to that?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing, logistics-wise, for the board's information, is the planning board meets tomorrow night, and they don't meet again until January. You all meet next week. I certainly can put something together very quickly for you to look at next week for the time, place, and manner, if the board would like that.
I do.
And my suggestions on what might work.
Yes.
My suggestion to that, if we do want to expedite, there was a considerable amount of work done by the planning board on the medical marijuana, and there was a location, if I remember right, on the border of Dennis. So we do have some mechanisms that are out there, that we probably could expedite and do that fairly quickly for time, place, and manner.
And if you would like, I could provide Charlene with examples of what some other towns have done, in terms of the special permit structure, and then you can decide where the allowed use would be.
Okay.
That would be very helpful.
I can do that.
Anyone else wish to comment? Okay, moving on to.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, your indulgence. I know later on in the agenda, there's an announcement about enhanced town council hours, and I just wanted to tell the board that we're very pleased to make this offer to the town, and if you can spare just 30 seconds, I'll explain what we're talking about.
Is that okay with the board?
Sure.
Yes, so he can go watch the Patriots.
So.
So he can go watch the Patriots, yeah.
So I will be coming once a month for four hours to Town Hall. Chris and I have been meeting, I think since August, every month, for two hours, where I bring my list of things, and he brings his list of things, and we go through everything and make sure that we're coordinated. And I found, I hope Chris agrees, that that's been a very useful exercise, to make sure nothing slips through the cracks, and that we understand where the board is coming from, and so forth. But in addition, now, we're going to add another two hours to that same time period, where I will have town council office hours. So any board or commission of the town, any town official, or any employee, department head, who wants to schedule time, can come in and see me, and of course, all of this is at no charge to the town. If somebody comes in and says, we want you to rewrite the zoning bylaw, well, then we'll have a discussion about, about the cost of that. But for the office hours themselves, that will be free of charge. And, you know, we do this in other towns, and in some other towns, and I think it works very well, and we're very pleased to offer that. I also wanted to mention that we were proposing to have Barbara St. Andre in my office, who used to be me in Harwich. She left our firm for a while, but now she's back again, and we're delighted to have her back. And Barbara has offered to be the principal land use contact attorney for Harwich, and so we would like to propose that. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but, you know, we value our relationship with Harwich, and we think this is a good opportunity to increase visibility, to be more accessible to town employees and officials, and we're looking forward to starting that.
Great. Thank you, John.
Great.
One quick question. Will they be set hours, John?
Yes. Good question. Except the first two months.
Okay.
The first one is next Tuesday, from 10:00 to 2:00. And then, in January, it's going to be Thursday, the, I think it's the 11th.
I think it's the 11th.
But then after that, it'll be the first, excuse me, the second Tuesday of every month, from 10:00 to 2:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing, proposed shellfish permit fee amendments. Larry, can you read the notice?
Open the public hearing. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on December 11, 2017, no earlier than 6:30 PM, in the Don B. Griffin Room, located at Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of discussing proposed 2018 shellfish permit fee amendments. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing and provide information and testimony relevant to this issue. Sign the Harwich Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Heinz.
Good evening. I'm Heinz Proff, the Natural Resources Director for the town Harwich. What we have before us this evening is a review of our current shellfish permits, what we currently charge, and a proposal to increase those. Some background, we're heading into 2018. The last time the town Harwich specifically addressed the cost of the permits was 2009, so we've had nine years of, in a sense, no changes to the specific costs of these permits. Harwich sells a variety of shellfish permits through the Natural Resources Department. They include our resident taxpayers, our resident seniors, which are 65 and older, non-residents, non-resident one-day permit, and commercial permit. I do want to disclose everything, so in 2014, which was four years ago, we made our permits individual permits, still with the spirit that if someone has a permit, they can take anyone under the age of 16 shellfishing with them, in a sense, family. Or it allowed seniors to take grandchildren, or grandchildren and their friends. It made it very usable, and it also made it very, much more easily enforced on shellfishing plans, not only by me, but our volunteer shellfish warden, so that anybody who's there has to have a permit who's shellfishing, unless they're under 16, and then they're with somebody who's responsible for them, and they're digging. So my letter outlined basically some suggestions to the costs, also how many permits we sell a year. Primarily, Harwich has recreational shellfishing in the town. We do have some commercial shellfishing, but the areas accessible to commercial shellfishers is not that great. And we have what is determined by Division of Fisheries, seasonally conditionally open approved areas. So we do have shellfishing that takes place in Herring River, Allen Harbor, Witchmere, Sacquetucket Channel, the beaches from Red River to Herring River, Round Cove, Pleasant Bay, and also Little Creek, that goes up into that culvert area. But there's different times of the year that you can access those, and based upon what we have as fees now, and what might be a modest increase to those, that's what I've presented. I can go through each one if you'd like, or answer some questions. I did hand out right there some comparisons, but in my letter, it's hard to compare apples to apples when you look at shellfish permits across towns, because different towns have different regulations, acreage available, time of year, amounts taken, you know, who's allowed on those permits. So I kind of hesitated giving you that as well to think about for a month. I just kind of ran it through, so you had some basis, but that's where we're at, just to, we do sell our permits. They expire on January 1st, so if we did address it tonight, I would then implement that going into 2018. If we were to table it, or leave them as is, I probably wouldn't come in front of the board for another two or three years, because these are part of the Harwich management plans, appendix, and addressing all those rates at once, making the changes makes more sense, rather than constantly making one little edit to our overall management plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Don? Janelle?
Heinz, I'm just looking at the commercial rate, and it's astoundingly different.
Yeah.
With all the other four towns that you've listed. Can you just.
Sure.
Justify that?
Yeah, so our commercial rate is much less than our neighboring towns. I haven't, the latest count in Chatham, in terms of the number of commercial permits that are sold in Chatham, is in the hundreds, 400 or 500. Harwich sold four last year, not 400, four. And that goes to the fact that our commercial shellfish holders really can access Herring River, and the deep waters of Pleasant Bay. They can go a little bit out Witchmere, Outer Harbor. And so those aren't even open year-round. So the access to these areas, which is seasonal, kind of December, January, February, March, April, to get their 100 pounds limit, they're really only doing that in December and January, and by February, the Herring River can't provide that, or north in Pleasant Bay. So it's the amount of shellfish that I'm able to put out there, where they have access to, that really, they're not getting much, and we don't sell many permits.
So I believe Amy Usoski was before us.
Yes.
Not so long ago, talking about seeding.
Yep.
Herring River.
Yep.
Will that increase productivity there, and would you imagine that over the next maybe five years, people may want to utilize that area commercially?
Yeah. The shellfish lab that's run, managed by the Natural Resources Department, has seeded Herring River every year for the last, since 1994, since 1990, have seeded every year. Now, it's varied, and this is, I used to raise around 6 million shellfish seed in the lab in the summer's time, and I'd get 2 to 3 million seed from our county. The county now provides me 200,000 Cohogs. And so, and I purchase Cohogs as well, but I'm only seeding less than a million total. Now, they're much larger than I used to seed, so there's a survival-type, you know, rate that gets increased by that. But I do seed Herring River, not to the amounts that I did in the past, but Herring River is accessible by commercial shellfishers, and primarily, there's a lot of private homes along there, so recreationally, it's difficult. They can come from Lower County a little bit, but they can't wade out too far, it gets muddy, and get stuck in there. So the commercial shellfishers do all right, and I can augment with other areas. And because you mentioned Amy Usoski, what we recently have started to do is there is a mitigation fund. So the money provided for seed comes to the Natural Resources Department, but I now have access through the Conservation Committee, or Amy Usoski, by mitigation funds to grow more shellfish, or even buy plantable seed in the fall, which is about the size of a quarter. I raise things from like grains of sand to about the size of a dime or nickel, but the largest they are, the greater chance of survival. So quickly to answer your question, yes, I could provide more through that other mitigation fund, or shift what I do within the Natural Resources Department to seed more in Herring River.
And I just have one more question.
Yeah, sure.
What do you foresee happening with Muddy Creek? I drive by it every day.
Yeah.
It looks like a perfect, perfect spot.
So the Muddy Creek, which has an east and a west side, think of the east side on the Pleasant Bay side, is conditionally open throughout the year. But on the west side, up still currently, is a permanently closed area. It's both Chatham and Harwich share that. But since the bridge culvert opening of a year ago, there's much greater flushing that takes place there. Water quality is improving. Division of Fisheries, as well as the Pleasant Bay Alliance, is taking water samples there, and if they can show that in cold weather, hot weather, rainy weather, all types of weather and conditions, that shellfish can thrive there and grow, that could become a conditionally approved area, which is kind of like this review that Larry mentioned early on, this Pleasant Bay Alliance watershed, that's one of their sections of a 20-page summary. But we could provide shellfish on that side of the river. If we get to that point, though, I'd have to have discussions, or we would have to have discussions with Chatham, because it's equally shared there. Right now, on the east side, it's easily enforceable, we have a Harwich side, and a Chatham little bend, but on that other side, we have to talk about some of the reciprocity, or who's allowed, and what type of shellfishing. But that will be a, I perceive a conditionally opened area at some point, when they have a full-scale water data for that.
Thank you.
Larry?
No other questions?
Heinz, where does the money go from this, from the permits?
General funds.
Just into the general fund?
And we raise about $8,000 a year currently on our permit fees.
Hard to argue $5 increase in nine years.
Yeah.
Can I, can I have a?
I move, we accept the recommendation from the Director of Natural Resources to increase the fees as proposed.
Second.
Move to approve the recommendation from Natural Resource Director on shellfish permit fees. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, hold on one second.
Apparently, it was listening to this public hearing, and I didn't notice that you opened it.
We definitely opened it. We didn't, I don't think you closed it.[1456.66][1456.69](laughter)
As members of the public, I, could somebody just.
Okay. Go through the rate?
What the rates were.
Oh, you didn't see?
Do you mind if I, so currently, for a resident taxpayer, we charge $20 for a year. The proposal is to raise it to 25. A resident senior permit, which is $6, has been proposed to raise to 10. A non-resident is $60 for the year, raised to 65. A non-resident one day, we say non-resident, because it goes from 20 to 25. A resident would just purchase the resident permit at 25, and then the commercial permit 50 to 55, so they're $5 increments.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, annual meetings with the selectmen, and first up tonight is Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee.
Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen, and residents of town of Harwich. I'm Matt Hart, Chairman of the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee. Looking at the town of Harwich disability and accessibility status, we have an elevated level of special needs. Of the 2004 entire non-institutionalized Harwich population of 12,076, there are 1,747 individuals, or 14.4% that claim some type of disability. This 14.4% is an increase from the 9.3% of 2,000, and continues to increase in 2017. Of the town of Harwich entire population, the individuals that are 65 years of age or older was recorded to having 914 seniors. Of those seniors, about 28% of that age group have claimed some type of disability. That 28% level of disability, particularly for those on the seniors, represents a significant special needs. This requirement within the Harwich community, the percentages are high in comparison with the 26% level for the county, and that for the state of Massachusetts. When you include all the year-round residents, with the weekend second homers, and the summer visitors, that ratio increases substantially for the individuals with disabilities and/or accessible abilities, issues, and needs in Harwich. Today, HARC, as we're calling it, which is Harwich Accessible Rights Committee, as part of the recently vitalized committee, we have a need for one full member and two alternate members. We meet here at the Town Hall on the fourth Thursday of each month, beginning at 6:30 PM. The mission statement of the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee is to advise and guide the town of Harwich and public regarding issues of accessibility by the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. Also, HARC provides information and referral services to residents and visitors. In the process, we work closely with local churches, elder services, and veterans agents. The committee also strives to establish and maintain membership that realistically reflects the population served. At the present time, we have applied for two state grants. One is for $250,000 to assist the town of Harwich with the handicap-accessible boardwalk and dock ramp funding of the new marina. The other grant is for $30,000, and is for the purposes of hiring a consultant to perform an ADA self-evaluation, self-evaluation review of the town of Harwich, which is a requirement by the federal government, as is required by the ADA. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Matt. Don?
No questions, just a comment. I'm glad to see it up and running again and populated, and really appreciate.
Thank you.
You championing that effort.
Janelle?
Ditto.
Thank you.
Larry?
Yes, Matt jumped in with both feet, and it's a great job. I will underline his request for additional members. This committee has been basically inactive. Chris has been trying to act as committee administrator at the same time. So we know there are needs out there that haven't been addressed, and the more we get people on the committee that inform us of that, we can meet our obligations to this portion of our community, so. My plea is, anyone listening to, contact Matt, the town, the nomination committee, and just see if we can get more members.
Thank you, Matt. Next up tonight is the Real Estate and Open Space Committee. Good evening, Kathy?
Hi, Kathy Green, Chair of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee. You have our annual report, I think. We meet in the third Friday of every month at 8:30 AM in the morning. We're at full capacity with seven members. They've all completed their ethics training in a timely manner, and all sworn in. Attendance is five to six members every meeting. We always have a quorum. Our agendas and minutes are always posted in a timely manner. What else would you like to know?
Thank you. Don?
Nothing right now.
Janelle?
No, I'll stop. Thanks.
Larry?
Don, I think you should. Don, I think you should mention that, this is your first paragraph, Kathy, on the number of onsite visits and properties you've been looking at, as an idea of your activity, and, you know, how that's going.
Well, we respond to anyone that comes forward to us with a request for a potential donation to the town, or a potential, they're looking for the town to maybe buy property. And we usually, we have them come in and talk to us, and then if we want to move it forward, we can do a site visit. So we've done quite a lot of them this past year, and then we take it from there.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you very much. Thank you, committee. Next up tonight, Brooks Free Library Trustees.
Good evening. Mary Ward, current Chair of the Board of Trustees at Brooks Library. As you know, we're an elected seven-member board. We meet the second Wednesday of the month at seven P.M. in the Thornton Meeting Room at the library, and all of our agendas and minutes are posted online, both on the town and Brooks Library website. All of our board members are current with the mandated ethics training as well. Tonight, we have present six trustees, including William Crowell, Ann Amerson, Jeanne Wheeler, Joan McCarty, and Joanne Brown, and Library Director Ginny Hewitt is with us also. I know you have our report, and I'm going to try to be very brief, and just highlight a couple of things within the report, but before I do that, this is a wonderful opportunity for the trustees to publicly thank some people that have been very supportive this year. So, before I take a few minutes to highlight a few items in our report, I'd like to, I would like on behalf of the board to publicly thank our Library Director for her extraordinary leadership and commitment to excellence over this past year. Thank you also to our staff for their dedication and innovative spirit that drives ongoing services and programs to meet evolving community needs and expectations. We thank all the dozens of volunteers that give of their time in support of the library. The thousands of hours that they donate contribute to our success, and the value of their work is greatly appreciated by the staff and the trustees. Thanks always to the Friends Group of the Brooks Library, who among many other services manage the Books on Wheels Delivery Service, provide funding for our vital program, and our summer reading program for children, in addition to discounted passes to museums and attractions, the full list for which can be located on the library website. Thank you to the Harwich Garden Club for maintaining our lovely gardens and providing monthly flower arrangements for the library. These arrangements are always appreciated, especially during the winter months, when flowers can truly lift the spirit. Thank you also to the Chatham-Nauset Lions Club for their ongoing financial and volunteer support of our vital program. Vital stands for Corse Vision Impaired Technology Assistance. We thank you, our Board of Selectmen, our Town Administrator, and many of our town officials and committees for your ongoing support during the year. We also need to include as a sincere thanks to Sean Libby for all of his expertise and work with respect to maintenance issues at the library, and especially for all his time as project manager guiding our current preservation project for the exterior of the library. As you're aware, we are currently seeking additional funding for this project to preserve our historic building. As the statistics included in our reports show, Brooks Library is currently the second busiest, busiest library in the Cape, second only to Falmouth Library, which has a main library and two additional branches. I encourage anyone who has not visited our website, brooksfreelibrary.org, to do so. From there, you will access a wealth of information on programs provided at the library, and all that you can access online using your library card. In FY seventeen, we responded to approximately seventeen thousand eight hundred reference questions. We held five hundred and sixty-seven adult programs, eighty-four youth programs, and five hundred and sixty-one children's programs, so a total of one thousand two hundred and twelve programs, with a total program attendance of fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-four. Of that, twelve thousand eight hundred and fourteen was the number in attendance for children's programs. This past summer, on more than one occasion, we had a hundred to two hundred attendees for storytime, so that staff developed a plan to provide multiple programs when needed. Just a couple of quick mentions from our report. This year, the library and the Recreation Department worked together to hold a joint summer recreation and reading kickoff event at the beginning of summer. The library provided an onsite book collection of recreational reading for the summer camp. The campers participated in some of our programs, and we sponsored a special performance for the end of summer celebration. Our youth librarian, Ann Carpenter, visits seventeen elementary school classrooms each week. She reads a story, does book talks, and leaves books in the classroom until her next visit. Students in the second, third, and fourth grades participate in a Mark Keldakott Award Program, reading and evaluating contenders for this award, thereby expanding their ability to think critically about books and illustrations. Our Assistant Director, Emily Mylin, serves on the Montemoy Middle School Council, so we can continue to support teachers and students at the middle school. And five of our librarians participated in the Montemoy High School Summer Reading Program, leading book discussion groups in September. We offer middle school makers, theater explorers, and early release programs to middle and high school students. This year, we added an additional theater explorer program for elementary school students since they're getting out earlier. Monthly engineering challenges are held on Saturdays to enable parents and grandparents to participate together. For our seniors, our librarians are meeting with the Council on Aging Director regularly, sharing information on services and resources, and planning joint programs and services. We have redesigned our technology training for the COA, and are holding monthly technology and T events, and bi-weekly device, device, device advice at the COA. With respect to technology in the library, technology training in the library now includes our Internet Navigators Program. We trained volunteers to help patrons one-on-one with developing skills needed to use email, apply for jobs, unemployment, and government programs. For our Booker Librarian Program, we developed written guidelines and standards, trained additional staff members, so we could expand the number of appointments available for one-on-one technology assistance. For community outreach, regarding community outreach efforts, we held a pop-up library weekly at the Farmer's Market in July and August. We did outreach visits to Pine Oaks to assist with technology, and provided information on library services at a meeting at Habitat Oak Street Neighborhoods Association. For services for the vision impaired, on July one, we entered a partnership with the Mass Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired. The association benefits from our expertise in running our well-established vital program, and they contribute access to their, they contribute to us access to their resources, and a small stipend that allows us to add five additional hours for our coordinator of the vital program, Carla Burke. Our goal of promoting the creation of assistive technology centers in locations across the Commonwealth has been realized with this partnership. Administrative items include our application to CPC and capital outlay for three hundred thousand dollars in additional funding for the exterior preservation project, and ten thousand three hundred and forty dollars to preserve and digitize the Harwich Oracle newspaper. Also, we have arranged for the digitization of the annual, of the annual town reports from eighteen sixty-six to the present by an entity known as the Digital Commonwealth, at no cost to the town. And finally, a little holiday update. Santa makes his annual visit to the library on Saturday, December sixteenth, at two thirty. All are welcome. And also, the library will, just a holiday update on library hours, the library will be open on December twenty-sixth, ten to seven. Regular programs will run that week, as well as special programs for children, for the children, because it is vacation week. So with that, I certainly have, happy to answer questions, and I have backup support for that as well.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for the detailed report.
Okay.
Larry?
This is not meant to be a, an aged joke that we do sometimes, but I can remember as a kid going to the library and checking out a book, and I'm amazed, and it just astonishes me, how much of an integral part you can become of the community, doing all those aspects, and I congratulate you for that. It's just a critical need, it's, you know, especially a time warp, I guess, and what, I think maybe if you remember what we used the library for, and what it's used for now. I have, I have two questions. One is, you list policies and procedures, you know, several of them. Are those on your website?
Yes, they are.
I, I took a casual look, but I didn't spend time on it, but they're on your website.
It would be under Library Information? So if you, if you navigate to Library Information on the website, the policies and procedures will be there.
Okay. My second question is, I, I like the fact that you're digitizing some town records. Will that be, eventually be on the web, so that I could look at a nineteen hundred annual report, for instance? If I wanted to?
Yes, that's part of the digital.
Come right up, Ginny.
That is part of the Digital Commonwealth. They do, they host that all on the Internet Archive. So, there's actually some, a small town in the Midwest has digitized and put up a couple of our town reports from the early nineteen hundreds. No idea why, perhaps somebody moved there that had roots here, I don't, I don't know, but it's kind of interesting if you, so if you go on the Internet Archive, you can find them there now. But so, yes, that's part of the plan. They'll be doing that.
Thank you.
Janelle?
I have nothing, but thank you for being open the day after Christmas. Yes.
Don?
Yeah, I'm gonna build on what Larry said. I remember a little over twenty years ago, after Playground got done, and we were talking about redoing the library, I had a conversation with Leo Deal. And he had said that, his, his idea of a library was that it was a barometer of how the community valued its members, and he also felt that it was the cornerstone of citizenship. He'd be very proud of the operation that's evolved today.
Yes, that's, thank you.
We all should be.
We're all, we're all very proud of it as well.
Ginny?
Sorry, I just want to say, Don, I want to echo what you said. I moved here in ninety-nine, so it was a year after the renovation, and I was finishing my last semester of library school, like, three children, had to buy a house, you know, sell a house, buy a house. I thought, I'm not really ready to make this move, but when I looked at Harwich, and the library had just been renovated, the community center was under construction, I thought, this is a town that values quality of life and community, and, and so that's why I made the decision to move here, and the schools were excellent, and I thought, well, I'm gonna get private school equivalent education for my children, and so it was too good an opportunity to pass up. And, and I just want to say, I, I appreciate all the town support from the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the voters, for the services that we provide. Not every town, you know, gets that same support, and I think it, it's, it's, I don't know, what, like a circular type of thing. We, we've gotten the money, and, and we're providing more services to people, and I see in other towns, you know, where my relatives live, that the library's hardly used, and they can't understand it, and they think it's a dying profession, and it, and it, it all depends, the libraries that aren't adapting, those are stagnating, and their budgets are being cut. And, but the libraries that are providing services that are relevant to people are not, and they're growing. And, and I'm, I really appreciate that we live in a town that values that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ginny. And thank you, Mary. And for all the trustees that made it to it. Okay, next up is the Town Administrator submitting the seven-year capital plan to the, plan to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. So I'll welcome up the Finance Committee.
I thought so, too. Okay.
Enough mics. We'll just tell everyone to speak loud. While we've set up, I just want to say that we all have to speak loud. We're sharing mics. Mic four. You're up, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jack, do you want to call your meeting order?
Call, meeting of the Finance Committee order, we have a quorum.
And a gallery.
I'm ready. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's actually two components. What I'd like to do tonight is, it, under the budget sequence that we have, or the budget calendar, it has the Town Administrator formally submits a seven-year capital plan to a joint meeting in the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, and then on January eighth, there's a formal public hearing of the same, same group. So, just so people are aware that there will be two bites of the apple, and the hearing component, I guess, opens it up to the general public to be able to comment. So, in terms of our overview, I, I know I've done this, it seems like I do it numerous times, but it's probably only my second or third time. So, a couple of things that we have, just to walk people through the material. So, it's a lot of material, so it doesn't really show very well, so I'm just gonna kind of describe, and then we do have it on the website, available for folks to be able to see, and we will have it available. So we do have two charts. We started to add, the last couple of years, we've been requested to look at what is the tax-supported debt service that we have existing and proposed. So we, we have a schedule that shows that, and just as a frame of reference, generally, our, our tax bill, if you would, goes up by about three, three and a half percent, or our tax, overall budget goes up by three and a half percent. That's two and a half percent per Proposition Two and a Half, and then we usually have new growth that adds to it, so we basically have a revenue stream of about three point five percent. So on one, we show kind of the, the total debt service, and then on the second one, and I think we added this in as part of the wastewater program, we have a line in there for what the average single-family home that we have valued at three hundred and fifty thousand, what is the debt element of their tax bill? Where does that debt go to support? So we, we do have on there, we have, again, the existing and the proposed. We do capture wastewater, oh, she does have it on this one. We, we do capture wastewater, we've captured the, the school project over at Cape Tech, so we, we try to capture as much as we can that, that's known, that's in the, in the plan. We don't include things like that, where we're gonna get grants and things of that nature. So this is purely debt service, so a good example of that, as I alluded to earlier, was Sacre Tugat Harbor, seven million dollars, one's coming, one million's coming from grant, and then six million, so only the six million would show up on here. And in some cases, just thinking about it, the debt service, some of it would be paid by property taxpayers, and some would be paid by ratepayers. So we do have, the harbor project is seventy-five percent paid by the ratepayers. It's a little bit too sophisticated to get in and kind of break out those components, so we show kind of the gross numbers in there. On this one, too, we, we do have the line, a, a green line that goes through, that when you average out the wastewater component, it's about a little over four hundred dollars on average for the plan. And this plan goes from twenty seventeen, so we have a year back, to twenty eighty-one. So it, it's about as all-encompassing as you can get. Part of the reason for that is just the wastewater program is a long program, so we wanted to be able to show that in context over time. The, the next one, I'm gonna get into the, kind of the meat and potatoes. I do want to just kind of clearly indicate that the departments, and I think we've gotten better each year, of departments submitting, and they recognize the need to have things on the schedule so that we can plan accordingly. And having the item on the schedule allows for then some flexibility. If things have more of a dire need, they can be moved up. If they can be postponed and delayed for a little bit, we have the ability to, to move them, and we have done that. The second element that we have included in this is that we do have a more comprehensive CPC application history in here as well, so we have that component built into this overall townwide plan. On the chart itself, as we get closer, we will also link this, and this is a new feature for this year, to the Town Meeting Articles. So when we do the article numbers, we'll assign an article number, so when people see this, they'll have the ability to tie it back. So if you go to the Town Report, you know, two or three years later, you can look, and you'll see the annual Town Meeting Number. You can go to that Town Meeting for FY, in our case, this year, nineteen, and you can reference back to see where that funding source is. So we're, we're trying to create a document that it has good flow and good history to it for going forward, so people can see, number one, as we present, but also people can see it afterwards. With that being said, there's obviously a lot of requests, several of them go out several years, and I think what I've done in the past is I'd like to highlight those ones that are slated for consideration in FY nineteen. So with, with both Committee, the Selectmen and the, and the. So, with, with both Committee, the Selectmen and the Finance Committee's indulgence, I'd like to pursue that. I will reference just the potential funding sources, too, so people have a sense for what the requests are. And at least at this point, the recommendation of the Capital Outlay Committee, which I know has a pretty good presence here tonight. I think most of the members, if not all the members, are here. So, if I misspeak, they can certainly help me on any of these. But just to work our way down, Administration, the first one that we have for '19 is the assessment on the Albro House. This is $2,500 under CPC Historic. So, and that is to do an assessment on Albro House to see what needs to be done, if we are to consider additional future uses of that. The next item, and I don't know, Mr. Chairman, you want me to just go through, or you want me to go slowly so you can interrupt?
Go through. If anyone has a question, just then we'll interrupt them.
Okay. Because I generally am gonna book it down.
We can save the question to the end if you'd like.
Just get my attention. So, the next item under Administration. And Administration is kind of a catch-all. So, if no one else submitted it, and I think it's important, then I do generally put it in for administrative purposes. So, this one, next one is in this category, a walkway reconstruction. Basically sidewalk reconstruction from Route 28, or along Route 28, from Sacre Tugat Harbor to Harwich Port. That is estimated at $250,000. The request was 250, and that would be funded from free cash. The next one I have for '19, although I did not recommend the funding, and I think it was basically some of the feedback of the Board of Selectmen, was the demolition of the former West Harwich School on Bell's Neck. I did kinda get a sense from some of the board's discussion that they would like to have that deferred. So, I have not recommended that, kind of based upon some of the comments made by board members at previous sessions. Under Cemetery, Mount Pleasant's gravestone conservation, this is just updating gravestones. This is a CPC Historic, $47,000. The Pet Crematorium, which was referenced earlier, is on there for consideration of $486,000 for the building. And then $91,950 for the actual crematory device. And those are anticipated to be funded from cemetery revenue. So, not necessarily, well, not from taxpayers, but from cemetery revenues. On the Community Center, there is a small request for $15,600 for computer replacement. We anticipate that that would become part of the operating budget. But I do try to capture everything, so we make sure we have an accounting of it. So, some of these ones, and the threshold for capital outlay is $50,000. So, sometimes I won't make the recommendation. I probably should say, as I read through the list, capital outlay and Administration agreed on virtually all of these. So, as I say that, it's implied that if, if the Administrator recommends that, also capital outlay. So, it's been a joint partnership in going forward with this. For those under, under $50,000, they didn't, they did not necessarily make a recommendation. On the basement construction of, at the Community Center, of public record storage, that's CPC Historic for $62,000 and change. Under Conservation, there's two primary ones, the Preservation.
Now, Chris, if I can interrupt, the CPC, those are recommendations at the moment, or they've been voted on?
Yeah, none of the CPC ones have been voted. They are anticipating making initial votes in January. And if you hold that thought at the end, I do wanna ask the board's indulgence on a CPC request that I received. On Judah Eldridge, because of the amount, I had it under CPC for Open Space. The Open Space, because of the request, there was not sufficient funds. So, the Judah Eldridge property was $369,000. To take that by eminent domain, that's funded from two sources, $319 from CPC Open Space, the recommendation of Administration, and the Capital Outlay, and $50,000 from Free Cash. The Cornelius Pond Property is strictly a conservation restriction on over 15 acres. The property would be owned by HCT, Harwich Conservation Trust. That is $200,000. $25,000 from Open Space is the recommendation from CPC. And CPC for Undesignated would be $175,000. On Engineering, we have MS-4, which is a, I guess, a regulatory name for municipal surface drainage. We have to have a plan and improvements. So, the initial plan to have it be updated is gonna be included in the operating budget for $25,000. That will be a larger number later on, as we have to implement the plan. And then also, under Engineering, there was submitted Pleasant Lake Ave Crossing Lights. Those crossing lights at the bike trail, which we have at different locations, to put up an additional one at Pleasant Lake Ave Crossing. That's $27,000, and that is recommended. Under the Facility Maintenance, DPW, some of these do show up in two places, but I just wanted to kinda highlight them. But this one is, the first one, under Facility Maintenance, update and replace the town's energy management system for HVAC. HVAC, obviously, heating and air conditioning systems. This is the electronics behind it. $140,000 was the request, and it's recommended by both from Free Cash. On the Library Preservation, as was alluded to earlier, that request before CPC is $300,000. It is Administration and Capital Outlay's recommendation to fund that out of the historic, out of the historic allocation pot of money from CPC. Also, carpet in the Community Center and Town Hall. We've been trying to link some of these together, so we have one contractor come in and do work in multiple locations to kinda get an economies of scale. So, those two have been merged. $130,000 for that request. That is anticipated to come from Free Cash. And then the Albro House in Brooks Academy Boiler is $40,000. Now, it comes from Free Cash. Did have a chance for that building and went down into the bowels, and it's definitely an old boiler. On the Fire Department, the Fire Department has a couple of, several requests. Phase two of the Townwide Radio System. This Townwide Radio System, I appreciate very much. The Fire Chief and the Deputy Chief have taken the lead on kinda coordinating our Townwide Radio System. These are literally radios in case of emergency. It provides for a backup system, $100,000. That is recommended to be funded out of Free Cash. There was a request in there for the Deputy Chief Vehicle Replacement. That was not recommended, but $48,000. Airpack Replacement Program, it's in total $300,000. $15,000 town portion funded from, Airpack Replacement funded from the town, $15,000 Free Cash, $285,000 anticipated from grants. I may have an update on that. I'll have to check my, my records. I think I did get some additional material from the Fire Department, so that's potential for a change in that. Ambulance Replacement Program, generally, every other year, we change out an ambulance. When we increase the fleet, we do ambulance every year. But the ambulance cost is $340,000, is the recommendation, and Free Cash would pay the $340,000. And then we had a presentation not too long ago at the Selectmen's Meeting for the Station 2 upgrade that had originally been carried at, at $4 million. And now it's $6,500,000 based upon that presentation. On the Golf Department, there's basically three programs that we have, Landscape Reclamation and Major Tree Removal. These will all be funded from golf fees, basically the fee charged for the operation of the golf, so not taxpayer dollars, but fee dollars, $35,000. Landscape and Hardscape Operation and Safety Projects and Traffic Configuration. This is also related to the project that we are currently engaged in. This would be an additional $50,000 to do additional beautification-type things, plantings and things of that nature. And then New Card Path at certain holes. Hole number 12 would be $24,000. That's also from golf fees. On the Harbor Master Project on the Land Side, the request was for additional funds. We do have, have identified $90,000 that would be reauthorized, or requested to be reauthorized, to put towards the Land Side Project. There was a request before CPC for $250,000 towards that for ADA accessibility issues on the boardwalk to contribute to that project. I do not, as the Administrator, recommend that. My hope is that we have two other grants in, and that one of the other grants would, would hit. So, I think it is an important priority, but I hope, I'm hoping that we get other revenues to cover that. On the Library, we already referenced the CPC project. Another CPC project for Historic is the Library Preservation and Digitization of the Harwich Oracle Newspaper, $10,340. Administration does recommend funding of that from CPC. Natural Resources, Hinckley's Pond, 400, actually $600,000. $450 is recommended to come from CPC, $150 from Free Cash to do that. And then $75,000 for the stairway going down to the beach, so part of the recreational component. That also would be recommended to be funded from CPC. There was a request for a new vehicle for the Natural Resources Department. That was not recommended to be funded, of $29,000. In the Planning Department, there was a request for the Housing Trust, Part-Time Housing Coordinator. I think these two, these really two components to that, obviously, the Housing Trust to have money to put towards helping with the affordable housing issue in the community. The initial request was $500,000. Based upon the allocation of CPC funding, it goes down to $295, with a minimum of $30,000 that would be used towards the Part-Time Housing Coordinator out of that. But that is by Administration recommended to be funded. The Police Department does have several items. One of the items, which does total up over the, over time to be more than the $50,000, is a TASER Replacement Program, which for Phase, for Year One of a three-year program, would be $36,000. And the TASER's are the devices that the officers use to subdue people, so a less-than-lethal-force element. Under the Public Works, we have the roadway, five-year roadway maintenance program. That target went from $4 million, we get $700,000 from Chapter 90. Chapter 90 is basically when you go to the gas station, you put your money, you pump gas. Part of your rate includes a gas tax, so we do get a portion of that back. Obviously, the state keeps a large portion as well, and we get some of ours back. We did include, and the, so $700,000 comes from that, we do have $700,000 recommended as a debt exclusion. Included in that is money for $100,000 for the West Harwich Route 28 Design, $100,000 in '19. There will be additional funds that would be needed at a later date, when that project hopefully goes on the TIP program in 2022. Under Public Works, there were four requests for vehicles, a all, well, F4, I'm sorry, a Ford F-350 Dump Truck for Cemetery at $80,000. That is recommended to be funded from Free Cash. F-250 for Highway at $55,000, recommended to be funded from Free Cash. F-350 Dump Truck for Parks Department at $80,000, as recommended for Free Cash. And the Johnson Sweeper Body. So, this isn't the whole sweeper. There's two parts to it. The part that goes down the street, the engine part, if you would, and then the body that accepts the dirt and debris that it picks up from the street. So, this was $125,000 to replace that. We didn't have sufficient funds in Free Cash to cover everything that we wanted to. So, that was not, was not recommended to be funded for this year. On Youth and Rec, they have requested a 2018 Ford Transit Passenger Wagon, $35,000. They run a lot of programs, and they have an older vehicle. This gives them greater flexibility. $35,000, that is included and funded for Free Cash, a recommendation. And then on the Bang Street Parking Lot, they did request $98,000. We have to update that. We are at $80,000, and that would be funded from Free Cash. On Rec and Youth, they have Brooks Park Phase 5 Comprehensive Light Plan. This would be, it's recommended to be funded from CPC, or an application exists before CPC for $333,500. The Town Clerk has Record Retention. Overall, the program is $80,000. $40,000 coming from existing funds, and then $40,000 from CPC Historic. The purpose of this is to actually hire a firm to go through the records and call out what we don't need to keep and what is duplications. There is a Record Retention Schedule that needs to be followed, so that would be the reason why a firm could do that more efficiently. On Wastewater, there is the tie-in costs to the pipes and pump station in Chatham. This would be debt exclusion, $2.1 million. This is the complimentary part to what was voted in FY '18. So, this allows us to tie into the Chatham facility, the actual cost of that. There is some implementation services, which are included, $20,000, which was included in the operating budget. It was included last year. And then Pleasant Bay South, the Watershed Collection System Construction. So, the actual construction dollars last year was the IMA, the paying Chatham for the use of their facility, and then the design cost of the system. So, this is actually the, the construction of the system. Under Water, the Water, underwater, the Water Department has three items in total. The Lower County Road Project, that was one that we had in '19 that we had moved back. The rationale, Mr. Hooper from DPW wanted to redo that roadway without TIP funds, the Transportation Improvement Program funds, because we wanna maintain the same layout that exists now and update that. But one of the things we need to do is to get out of the way of all the subsurface utilities that exist, so the Water Enterprise Fund would fund the portion of replacing that water line and some of the service work off of that. And that's over, that's $1,18,700 to complete that. And then they have two other projects, the 2018 Ford Super Duty, two units, which would be $110,000. And Wells and Pump Access Asphalt Management, this would be to improve access into the facilities at $175,000. The grand total of the requests were $37,159,721. Administration recommends $36,88,618. The last page of this material shows kind of charts and graphs for how the requests break down. I do have the funding summary, $36,000 that are in there. And maybe just to highlight a few, the recommendation from Free Cash. Free Cash was certified at 3.576, so almost $3.6 million. So, about $1.6 million would be allocated towards the capital program under this, under this recommendation. Community Preservation, under the recommendations that have been presented, would be $2.6 million. That, they have available funds of $2.7 million. So, the recommendation is within the budgeted allocation, as well as the individual allocations within that. CPC has an overall amount they get, but they have to dedicate 10% to historic purposes, housing purposes and open space purposes. So, they have 30% that is kinda committed. The debt exclusion, which is the lion's share of this, obviously, the wastewater is a very large component of this overall project, is $29 million. And then the Water Enterprise is about 1.3. So, that is a overview. And actually, just to go, I have been to the CPC, two meetings in a row. I'm scheduled to go back on Thursday night. And one of the things that I was asked at one of the meetings was that I had arranged the priorities based upon, I've done this presentation to the board. And to me, if CPC has allocated that $2.7 million, that I should approve projects or recommend approval of projects based upon funding sources. Because I think each department has done due diligence to make sure that these aren't frivolous requests. These are important requests that, in my opinion, comply with the requirements of CPC. So, I allocated it based upon available funds within the bucket. I was specifically requested at one of the meetings to actually go through, and I don't know how many requests there were in total from us, but if there were 12 requests, to grade them from 1 to 12 and give a priority. And I don't know if the board's okay with me attempting to do that, or the way I've done it, there's only two or three requests that I recommend. done it, there's only two or three requests that I recommend have been modified in which we can still go forward. So I think that that is more in tune with where the selectmen are in terms of the financing plan, but I just wanted to at least acknowledge, I did mention to the chairman today from CPC that I would seek some direction from the board. If you do want me to do a ranking from 1 to 12, I can certainly do that. Or if you agree with the approach that was taken, to fund what's available within the applicable buckets. Thank you.
You know, on that, Chris, we've been pretty consistent and you've been very upfront about your requests, so I'm, I'm fine with your ranked priority. Larry, Reese, Don, Janelle?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I think, start with questions from, Janelle says she's leaving.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions or comments? Now I'm gonna just start tonight with Finance Committee. Jack, do you want anyone to start with questions for Chris on this? Ed? Any questions? Lori? Mark?
When you looked at records retention, did you look at like digitizing them as well as purging them, or is it purging?
Yeah, believe it or not, I actually attended, and now several years ago, a, not symposium, but Director of Public Records. And the public records, and this hasn't changed in my time of doing this, that the only record, well, there's two records that they guarantee would last forever. One, I don't know if forever is probably a strong word, but lasts for a long time. And that is a paper record and a microfilm record. So they don't recognize a technology, whether it's a thumb drive or the old five-inch discs or the three-and-a-half-inch disc. They don't recognize that as something that is gonna survive the test of time. Not necessarily my words, their words. So if we were to digitize them, they don't recognize that as a valid record for retention purposes, so we would still have to keep paper copy. We are digitizing because I think, quite honestly, it's easier for the general public, if they want to look something up, to be able to email them the information and for them to access it. So it does make sense, as you saw with Oracle, to have some of these digitized to make it more accessible. But for public records purposes, we still have to retain the document.
That's it.
John?
Thank you, Chris, of Capital Outlay Committee for putting this plan together. Just one question, Chris, where is the school debt carried at? Is that carried in these, those two red charts?
Yes, we have, the, the school debt is shown on the, on the charts here, under existing. So the, the majority of that is the Montemoi debt. The projected debt includes the schedule for the anticipated amount for the Cape Tech.
Thank you. Dan?
I have no questions at this time.
I, I noted that there is some money that you, you put in this document around OPEB and stabilization, which is good, and I hope we can maintain that. The, the other thing was, you, there had been discussion about a wastewater maintenance fund. I didn't see that exactly in here anywhere. Does that mean it's off the table, or what?
Well, I, I think that's really a, a board discussion, but in the, in previous iterations, I think in last year's deliberations, as we were going into town meeting, there is a water slash wastewater, basically CPC-type fund that you could put in and vote, that does generate revenue consistent with how CPC generates money. And I think that as we move forward, I know a couple folks weren't, you know, necessarily on the board at the time, so it was the previous board, that the decision was made to just fund it with debt exclusion. And I think some of the rationale for that is it's excludable by, for income tax purposes and things of that nature. But, you know, if the board wanted to have that as an additional funding mechanism, that is something certainly that the board could bring up again and talk about.
So it may show up at some point.
It could show.
Or not.
I do think, just personally, what you're doing though, is you're gonna take it from a debt exclusion and you're gonna make it, you know, 75% debt exclusion and 25% water, wastewater fund. So, you know, the, the value is you can go above and beyond Prop 2 and 1/2 with that ability to raise that additional money. But in essence, it, it, in my mind, you're just kind of paying the same bill two different ways or one way.
Right.
It has the same impact either way.
That's all for now. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm kind of lost with the, in the TASER area. The aggregation of something adding up to more than $50,000, if you use that line of logic to its extreme, you could have like trailer loads of screws and nuts and bolts, and you could call them capital. I mean, I thought that the spirit of the capital budget was something that was a capital acquisition, you know, for the thing.
Yep, I hear you.
Where, where's that line get drawn then?
I, I think that under the existing charter, it has 50,000, so technically to-
I don't mean that, I mean, you're aggregating to get to the 50. Where does that line get drawn? At what point do you, you get to absurdly cheap level per item, but you're getting a lot of them?
I, I think in terms of-
Because you're doing this over three years to get over 50.
Well, I, I look at it two different ways. One is, if we wanted to just buy them outright, then we would be over the $50,000 threshold. The fact that the manufacturer gives us the ability to pay a bill over three years is, I, my, my thing is just, is just transparency, that the overall impact of that is in the neighborhood of 50,000. I just wanted to disclose, you know, that there are options to pick.
Don?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I get that. But if this were business plan, it was a capital item, I'd be depreciating it. I mean, it, you're adding up a whole bunch of radios to get to the, to that, that doesn't make any particular radio a capital item. I mean, not radio, the TASERS, but it doesn't make any one TASER a capital item.
And, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, when I was at Capital Outlay, when they presented this, it's a phased replacement as well. I mean, that's that. Because I, I, I see part of Don's logic, because I don't think we should divide anything by three, but I think it was presented as a phased replacement. We don't need $90,000 worth.
It's a phased technological replacement.
Right. So we're not getting them all-
It's the adjective that makes it work. We're not buying the same, we're not replacing the same at the same time. Okay? So it may be Model A in '19, and if they need to be replaced with a B, we're getting that. So that's the reason why it's broken up in thirds. Not equal thirds, but it's a phased in replacement.
And you had, obviously had that conversation when you-
We did, and that was exactly what you're saying that they came in. Can I make a couple of comments?
Please do.
Do you mind? Okay, I'm Rich Larry, I'm the chairman of the Capital Outlay. And I want to thank all the members that are here, and also that are sitting on the Finance Committee. We had a discussion in the last meeting when we finally approved all the recommendations, and our vice chairman was very, very concerned that the, the dollar amount this year is so different from last year. And of course, it's the, the elephant in the room, the $22 million. And that $22 million, I just want to let the taxpayer know that we're not spending the $22 million this year. It's the borrowing of the $22 million that's going to be, you know, amateurized for the 30 or 40 years. And it's like buying a house. If you're buying a house for $350,000, you're not coming up with the $350,000 this year. So that, that's pretty much where, you know, where that stands. The other thing that we were concerned about was the, of course, the firehouse and the deviation, but the deviation is because of the market, and we'll live with it. And I think the Fire Department is on a fine job in terms of explaining to us why the change, and explaining, of course, to the board, the change in the dollar amount. The, the way this was presented, and I, I really think it's critical that if anyone has any questions, Chris has come up with a fantastic way of looking at where it says FY19 and the departments. That's the catch-all. That, that says it all. And the caveat to that, or the asterix, is that our votes are for the maximum amount. So if the money comes in lower, we, we do not have to vote again. Also, our votes, our recommendations for CPC funding and the dollar amounts is if the availability of CPC funds are there. So we do not have to vote again, and we prioritize. We also felt that this year, we, we were given the opportunity, all the members, to find out when CPC's meeting, and we feel that we could champion some of the efforts to get through. I know we, we work with the library, and that's one of our, one of our pets that we think should go through. We all want that to go through, we think it's logical, and we have others too, but only because they're here and they've supported us in the past. I want to support them. And if you have any questions of the committee, you know, we're certainly here to answer.
Just a couple points on what you said. We appreciate certainly you going to CPC, as well as the rest of the board and the Finance Committee, because that money is sitting in a bank. We have 2.7 million dollars of taxpayer money that hasn't been spent. So it's very important that we go and urge them to spend that money on these projects. The $22 million you mentioned in wastewater, it's important to note, and Chris probably has the number, what we spent last year and what is lost if we don't vote this through this year.
Right.
12 million dollars.
Roughly 12 million dollars of taxpayer money was voted last year, and we chose not to put the 22 million on last year's ballot in town meeting. But that money goes away if we don't vote through the piping in East Harwich.
And I think it's, to support that, Mike, the, if they, if you look at the plan, and this will be in, in a smaller version, I hope, for town meeting. But if you look at the wastewater and the 22 million literally completing Phase 2, there are no more expenditures till the out-years 23, 24. So we sort of live with that bumping. We talked about this even curve or slope, and this, this sort of helps it.
And for the audience at home, there is a tax calculator on the website, which you can go in and plug in the assessed value of your house, which will give you what your tax implication will be to this wastewater project.
And one final comment, that Chris talked about the, the two graphic slides or presentations that he, he had made. I think the, the second one, which talks about the impact on the, the house at 350, if you read it correctly, I mean, I interpret it, not that it's correct enough, but the way I interpret it is the fact that in the out-years, out of 2029, is you're really gonna see, what we have existing really goes away, and that's where the new one starts to kick in. So that's, that's the one I think is more relevant to the taxpayer. That's all I got.
We're gonna dive, I think we're gonna dive into the detail of this in, in future meetings, but how much thought did you give to the, it appears to be about eight or nine requests for new vehicles in here? And obviously, we have to keep up our fleet. But eight or nine new vehicles, how many go away? How much, how much deliberation did you guys have on that?
You know, we ask, and we, we always get from the departments, you know, they have an inventory list of, of their life, especially, you know, DPW. You know, they only have a certain lifespan, and they, they certainly have a great mechanic that has kept these things, you know, alive and well. And when I think we work well, the town recycles these vehicles too.
Yeah, they're not really, they're new, but they're replacing existing vehicles, so there's no new net increase on vehicles for the fleet, just-
No new net increase?
No new net increase.
Right. And the other thing is, the difference in what we're seeing here, and like the Police Department, which really treats them as operating budget expense, and it's almost like buying a pen, the ink runs out and you throw it away, that's pretty much the way the Police Department treats their police cars, because they're 24-hour assets that are being depleted. So that's the difference.
Chris, my last question is the $250,000 walkway in Harwich Port. It's under administration, I believe. Isn't that scheduled with the state two or three years out? And we're proposing to pay for it in free cash. Don't we have a commitment from the state to do that sideways?
Yeah, but there is no timeline, so it could be two years or it could be 20 years. And if, if we wanted to expedite, I mean, in fairness, when, when we made some inquiries, it's, it's not on any of their capital schedules yet.
But they have committed to do that.
They have committed to doing it. I just wanted to take the opportunity to just thank Carol Coppola, the new Finance Director, for doing some of these charts. I mean, it's been a tremendous help for me that she's taken a lot of this material and has been able to provide some of these graphics that, I think I did some, and then also Hilltop Securities has provided a tremendous amount of assistance in that, to make this more translatable to the, to the residents of the community.
Yeah, thank you, Carol. I think we have three questions. Okay, if they're from the audience, you have to go to the mic. Ed? If they're from the table, they're fine.
Mike, to answer your question about the, the walkway, it is, it's been a promised item for as long as I've been the selectman, but never, it's never come up on any of their schedule. But more recently, we had at the Selectmen's Association, Scott Bosworth, who's the Director of Strategy for Mast Dot, was there, and I raised the issue to explain the importance of getting it, getting some funding to it, given the investments that the state is putting in, in the rebuild of Sacquetucket Harbor, and the investment they put, they put, they have put in in the past of Witchmere Harbor. It's really incumbent upon them to connect the dots, so to speak. And then I've asked all of our state legislators to take the matter up with Mast Dot.
Great. Thank you, Ed. Be nice to exhaust all options before we spend 250,000 in free cash.
Ms. Chairman, Larry brought it up, but this, the working document is a tremendous document for us in terms of being able to, to get through all of this. It has the color options and all those things. But by the time it does translate to the warrant, it's in black and white, and it's so small that most people can't read it. I would recommend a couple of options. One would be that maybe we print this and include it in color in the back of the warrant so that they could, as a pull-out kind of thing, you at least explore that as a board. And the other idea is, in terms of finding ways to shrink it, I was able to shrink everything on here to two pages of readable type if you don't include the under 50,000, and if you just stick with the columns. Most of the information that we get to make decisions on have to do with the funding of the, the current year. If you don't include that in the capital plan article, which is a no-charge article that just explains what we have coming up, it, it all fits real nicely. So I think the board, it's your warrant, you have these decisions, that you at least explore the idea of either A, coming up with some more money so that everybody could have this, because this is a tremendous tool that at town meeting doesn't translate well. Or you just find some different ways to, to kind of look at how you're gonna present this in your warrant to the, to the voters. To come in and, and get this for a shot is, is kind of tough. Just, just a recommendation. And I'll, I'll leave you what I did with it, so that you can at least explore that. The working documents are tremendous document, it just doesn't translate well to the warrant.
Thank you. Jack?
Rich? I have a question for you. On bottom of page three, there are three CPC-related topics, and I see the town administrator recommended them. And you guys haven't taken action on yet, or did you oppose it, or what?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chris.
Maybe do, when we were going through, these ones were outside applications.
Yeah.
So they weren't really part of the town infrastructure. They were unrelated but being requested. So when I was asked to give the prioritization, it was a prioritization of just town requests and not private requests. and not private requests.
Okay.
So the three requests that you're referencing, and I did put them in here just because if I'm going to balance a budget, I need to balance it with everything and not parts, but are the Community Development Partnership for $10,000, Habitat of Cape Cod for $300,000, and then the Harwich Housing Authority. So I did provide recommendations. I don't know if I really asked the capital outlay, because it's not really part of the town infrastructure in terms of that.
No, we never discussed it.
But that was the rationale. I just wanted to kind of clarify.
I mean, the act does not distinguish between private and public. And so, yeah, I think, you know, capturing somewhere, we've not done the housing we want to do, okay, as much as we want to do, as much as we need to do. So, you know, to me, to look at that and say, geez, COC didn't recommend anything. I wonder if it's a problem? Okay? Richard said they haven't taken up. That makes sense, for now. But, you know, it's one system. It may be, town maybe may have its system, but there's one system that includes CPA. Okay? And I think we have to recognize that.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, Mike.
I'll take note of that. We won't meet back till probably March.
Take it under advisement.
Okay, we take, we've got some snowbirds in our group and winter sabbaticals, but that certainly will be an open item that we can address when we, can I just make one comment?
Go ahead.
Just, nobody had said this all evening, this is a fluid working document, okay? So that, I know Dana wants, you know, I agree with you 100%, but even at the night, you know, that meeting before town meeting that we all go to, it's still subject to change.
Right.
So we have time to work through things. By charter, we have to meet tonight. By charter, January 1st, there's another public hearing, or January 8th of '18, we have to meet again. But this is liquid, fluid, and so forth.
I would be remiss if I didn't say that's a nice piece of work.
Well, thank you. But it's the committee.
It's committee work, I know.
It's the committee, and Chris has done a fantastic job by putting what we've thought and what we've all thought about onto a piece of paper. Easily understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Dana? Just one quick comment on what you were talking about in terms of the definitions of things. The, who's the group that takes care of our charter? The Charter Review Committee has found a couple of just wording errors in that section of the charter, and they're going to be coming before you at some time with some sort of recommended discussion points on the capital outlay as it's written right now. They can't seem to determine that the threshold isn't 50,000 exactly above or below. They're saying according to the wording that it's 50,000, and that none of this qualifies unless it's 50,000. And they have some other things, but one of the things you could, as a board, think about is what you want those definitions to be. You know, it used to be 100,000, it used to be, there were different items within the definition that were covered and not covered. So if you have questions about that, maybe you bring it up and talk about it.
Thank you. All set?
Meeting adjourned.
Finance Committee meeting adjourned.
Yes.
Board still has.
Yes, you carry on.
You're not part of us?
We'll give you this floor, don't worry.
I think we can go right through these. So the next up is approved request by Town Planner to approve use of remote participation beyond three meetings for Planning Board member Dave Harris. So this is a specific request. It is in the packet. Don, why don't we start with you?
It seems to me, I mean, the charter calls for a certain amount of attendance. It's, I was on the interview committee for the county executive, and we had a couple of the interviews done by Skype. It's really cumbersome, and you start getting involved with plans that you're reviewing, deviations from plans. I mean, it's very technical stuff. I mean, by my count, you're talking about nearly half of the year.
Hang on one second.
They're having a hard time hearing you, maybe because of the, you can try to speak more into it.
Normally, no one ever asks me to go back over something again.
Come on up, Charlene. It's because Jack Brown's loud.
What was that?
All right, go ahead. Yeah, this is the request by the planning, by the planner?
Yes.
To extend the three remote participations to five, I believe, for David Harris, specific member. Don, pick up with you.
Okay, well, let me.
Start again.
Let me start again. I mean, I was part of the interview committee for the county administrator. We had a couple of candidates, and this was just an interview scenario, where they were Skyped interviews. It was unreal to even do that. Planning Board, when you're talking about site plans and other things that neither you nor I are going to be able to even know, are going to be coming up in four or five months, it's really cumbersome. Just to do remote participation for that, because you're talking about nearly half of the attendance period for the year, at five. And I haven't had the opportunity to go back and look at what his attendance was in the prior year or two, but I guess my point is, when you're interviewing, and I'm on the interview committee, one of the first things we ask are, you're going to be around and available. Is this something that's going to happen every year with the same person?
Thank you.
I know it wasn't your request, but.
Larry?
Yeah, I have an opposite view, which probably, not the first time, Don, I've had opposite views. I think of the requirements of the, what they handed down to us, the remote participation from the state, was that you had to have the chairman present, you had to have a quorum present without remote participation. The initial qualifications, they had, I think, four or five reasons that you could do remote. And there must be a lot of interest in that, because I note that, I think this spring, they revised that to make a much broader statement. You could use remote participation if you were physically not there. I take your points that, you know, special plans is somewhat difficult. I think with those criteria, with a quorum, have to be there, chair has to be there. I would leave that up to the committee, knowing their people, and there's, I know in times past, there's, before we had the, maybe some of the requirements we do now, some committees felt a particular member was so valuable that they were willing to live with them out there for, you know, a few meetings, because when they were there, they had special expertise. And I would hate to lose a member that the committee feels that they provide that need, and they can participate and be effective, and maybe they're 75% effective. But since you also already have to have a quorum, you have to have a chairman, I would like to give them that freedom and proceed with this request.
So my opinion is, this is a single request for a single person on a committee right now, that we do not have a full board. It's a regulatory board. We do not have a full committee, and we're going to start running into quorum problems until we get more people that apply. We're the Board of Selectmen, so if this doesn't work in the first couple of meetings, we can make a decision and change this. So, you know, I'd support it, because it's a single request for a single person, and we can change it if it doesn't work. And right now, my concern through the chair of the Planning Board and the planners' request is, we're going to have a quorum problem if we don't approve this. And it is a regulatory board, and I don't think that we should do that to the people that are trying to come before them. With that, there's three of us here. This takes a full vote of the board to make this request pass, so if it doesn't seem like it, maybe we should bring it back. So, you know, I'm getting this sense that we should bring this back when we have a full board, so I'm bringing this back next week, if it's okay with the board.
Sure.
Okay, next up is the discussion of CPC application of the Housing Trust and a vote to support. We have voted to support this already. We've talked about this by consensus. We all supported the CPC application put forth by Chris and the Planning Department. This is for the Housing Trust. The chair and the, some of the members of the Housing, or the CPC have asked that the, that we're asking for money that isn't going to be spent in the year that they're going to give it. So I think that the Board of Selectmen needs to vote to support this and also authorize one of us, which I'd be happy to do, to stand before the CPC committee this week and say that we voted to support it, and ask them to put the cart before the horse.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Do either of you attend, plan on attending CPC this?
I don't.
Not this week, so please do go.
Okay.
They do have that on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, so it would be good if someone could be there to.
Right.
I'll be there, so.
The question is, is it going to be too many of us there?
Well, that's why I asked, because I was going to ask that we posted as a meeting if everyone was going to go.
I got you.
Next up is the update on the Housing Authority vacancy on CPC. I'm going to be careful on this one, because there is no minutes posted, and I want to be clear that I didn't read minutes, because they are behind on their minutes. They apparently, and from a committee member, voted last week to expend Housing Authority money on challenging legally the Board of Selectmen's not appointing their person to the Housing Authority, Bob McCready, to be specific. If that's the case, I wanted to make the public aware of it. If it's not the case, maybe they could come in and explain it. I did have an exchange with Sally Urbano after the last, after the meeting that the board did not, Sally Urbano being the chair of the Housing Authority. I did have a conversation or an email exchange with her. Don's motion at the end, when we did not reappoint Bob McCready, or did not confirm their appointment, was time-sensitive. So I sent a follow-up email asking, telling them that it was important that they have a seat on CPC, that they please pick another person in a timely manner. The response that I got, and it was either from Jon Stewart, the Executive Director, or Sally Urbano, because I believe they used the same email, was no, our pick was our pick. Now it's come to my attention that they're going to expend Housing Authority money to try and prove the Board of Selectmen wrong and say that we should have confirmed him. So I wanted to make the public and the board aware of that. It's a little troubling, I think, to me, because Bob McCready sits, and this is, I guess, I'd like some direction from the board on this, but it's my understanding that Bob McCready is an employee of HAC, the Housing Assistance Corporation. In a memo given to CPC last week, it was outlined that the Housing Assistance Corporation does the advertising for the article that Housing Authority has presented for 400,000 in CPC funds for three home buydowns. And if Housing Authority is involved, Housing Assistance Corporation is involved, then I don't understand the strong request to have Bob McCready serve on CPC, and I don't understand why he hasn't recused him. So with the board's permission, I'd like to at least look into this as far as an ethics thing goes, and to at least confirm everything that I just said. Larry?
I don't know any of the details of them challenging this. It's unfortunate we're spending Housing Authority money to do that. I do think, if that's true, I do think that Bob McCready has or is retiring from HAC in the, you know, in this timeframe.
Okay.
So I'm not sure of the ethics part of that. I would like to challenge that in another way, because it's a, quite frankly, it's a waste of money and time. You know, there's battles to fight, and sometimes you have to go and move on to other things. But that's my two cents.
Don?
Listen up, Larry. I agree with you. That's it.
Okay. All right, well, that's just more of an update. Like I said, that's, just wanted to make it clear that the Board of Selectmen has asked them to pick another representative to CPC.
In the minutes that we just approved.
In the motions, and that has not happened yet. Okay, now, next up is adopt final hazard mitigation plan. It's in the packet. Chris, did you want to, or just give an, give a?
Actually, Charlene's more familiar with the topic than I am.
This was actually kind of very exciting. I've been involved in three hazard mitigation plans, and this was the first one that got approved on the first try by FEMA, so that was very exciting. What does need to happen at this point to finalize this, and you do have the final hazard mitigation plan? The only difference in the entire document is, instead of draft, it says final. So at this point, we do need a formal vote by the Board of Selectmen to adopt the final hazard mitigation plan. That will then be sent to FEMA, and they will give their final blessing on the plan.
Questions or motion from the board? Larry?
The effect this has on our property insurance?
On our property insurance, not a whole heck of a lot, to be honest with you. What this does make us eligible for is FEMA grant funding that will, that becomes available time and again. If you don't have an approved hazard mitigation plan, you're not eligible to apply for those. And in some cases, it can be substantial funds. One example is the shutters on the community center. Those were paid through, paid for through FEMA money that was only eligible because we had an approved hazard mitigation plan at the time.
My assumption, I guess, I've assumed actually that without the mitigate, reverse that question, if we didn't have the mitigation plan, our property insurance on flood would be higher.
I don't believe that's the case, Mr. Valentine. Because we participate, the town of Harwich participates in the federal flood program, it makes property owners within the town eligible to get flood insurance. So that's kind of a separate thing. If we did not participate in that program, nobody in Harwich through the flood insurance program would be eligible to get flood insurance. They'd have to get it through, like Lloyds of London or some other mechanism. But the hazard mitigation plan does allow us to have funding opportunities that we otherwise would not have.
Thank you.
Don?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the plan.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is local building inspector position wage. This is one of the items we discussed in executive session tonight and voted to approve. With that, Chris, will you just give us a real quick overview?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We came aware upon the departure of our local building inspector over to the town of Chatham. He did take a, an upgraded position, but part of his thought process was that we were out of whack in our salaries. So we did do a, kind of a market analysis of what other towns pay their local inspectors, and we were significantly lower. This moves the position from grade seven to grade 10, roughly a $5,000 to $10,000 increase in compensation. That puts us more into the marketplace. We did present this to the union, and the union is in agreement with the recommendation. And if the board votes us tonight, we'll commence recruitment for the position.
So we did vote it?
Yeah.
Now we've announced it.
Oh, in executive session, yes.
We're all set.
Sorry.
Okay. Old Business Selectmen's meeting schedule for Christmas and New Year's. I saw our calendar in there, Chris.
It's 2018. It's the wrong year.
Yeah, it's the wrong calendar. So I think my recommendation.
I don't even know what I'm doing next week, never mind next year.
My recommendation would be, and obviously, just my recommendation, that December 18th is next week, and that would be the last meeting of the year, and then January 8th. Just by the way the calendar falls, Christmas is on a Monday, and January 1st is on a Monday. So we kind of are in a tough spot. I suppose the board could try to meet on January 2nd or January 3rd. The problem is, I know I'm taking that, I have in-laws coming, so I'll be off that week of Christmas, so how much material we could actually put together and put in is going to be somewhat limited by staff availability. But the next two meetings of the Selectmen would be December 18th and January 8th, and the board would have two weeks off.
I'm fine with that. If we need to call a meeting, we can.
That would be my comment. We just have, we need to call when we need to do it.
So you guys are fine with that?
Yep.
Thank you. Onto Town Administrator's report.
I'm going to make this super quick. The enhanced town council services, we've already had Attorney Giorgio on the S&amp;P Global Ratings. I kind of referenced that a little bit. The three areas where they thought that we could do some, they thought, number one, we were strong financially. we were strong financially, and we were good at building reserves, retirement. They would like to see the county be more aggressive on retirement. They'd like to see us be more aggressive on funding OPEB, and they want us to increase reserves above and beyond the current levels. And then the town hall hours for surrounding towns, the majority of towns on the Cape, the vast majority of towns on the Cape, have a 8:00 to 4:00 schedule. Some are 4:30 to, 8:00 to 4:30, some are 8:30 to 4:00, and so on. But we are a little bit out of sync with what other towns are doing. So, that's something that the board may want to give some real consideration to at future sessions. And then just to reiterate, last thing, on January 16th, 2008, at the community center, from 7:00 to 9:00 is the Southern Pleasant Bay Watershed Information Meeting for folks that live in that area. So, I think I will remind folks every meeting I get to kind of bring that up, because I only have two more bites of the apple until that time. So, just to let people know that that's coming. And that concludes my comments.
Selectmen's Report, Don? Larry?
I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. They're adjourned.
Boy, you beat 9:00 o'clock.
Almost.
Almost.
What time does a game start?
8:30.
8:30 already started.